Okay, good evening. We will call to order the regular meeting for the City of Shenandoah on Wednesday, October 24, 2018 at 7:06. I'll call the roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say this place in the regions and if you'd like to stay standing with me.
Oh, thank you, Chris. Sorry about that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we come before you tonight and as always, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for blessing us. Thank you for showing us grace. Thank you for showing us forgiveness and most of all, thank you for loving us. We don't do things perfectly, but you love us perfectly. Thank you especially for giving us this time where we get to go out and we get to vote, where we get to have a say so, we get to have a voice. Not everybody in this world gets to do that. We're aware of that and we certainly appreciate that blessing and we hope that everybody takes that opportunity to get out and go let your voice be heard. Bless those people that are running in those various races. It takes a lot to serve. It takes a heart of someone who is willing to give of themselves to try to make a difference in their community, whether it be large or small, and try to make it a better place for everybody that lives there. Please bless those people that have put themselves in that line of fire and are willing to be exposed because they realize that that's for the greater good. I'd like to ask you to bless our men and women of our armed forces and our first responders. I think it's in times like these when we think about the fact that we get to go out and vote, that we need to remember to thank them for protecting those liberties for us. Pray all these sons in your son's name, all these things in your son's name and all God people said.
Okay, so, item five, the citizens' forum, and we only had one resident signed up to speak and that would be Mr. Richard Sauerfield. Been a while since we've, first of all, you're looking better.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Appreciate your listening to us tonight or myself. I'm here in opposition, I'm here in opposition to the proposed underpass to Research Forest at Grogan's Mill. And I know that the city's position, or at least articulated, is that it's not your project. Well, the Woodlands today took a position, it's probably not their project either. They took a no-stand table, sounded like it was permanent, position. The thing about saying it's not your project is one way of saying it. However, I'm not sure that really fully communicates very well to the community. Because it is your responsibility to look out for your community. And this project doesn't fulfill on that, I don't believe, and many of us don't believe that. As you know, there's a growing petition of over 500 citizens right now not in favor of this project. So, we sort of feel let down, sorry to say that, because we don't know what the other payoff might be in that regard. One little bit about me that you may not know is I was one of the original individuals involved in the 1970s of putting Metro together. And that's a pretty large entity now in the Houston area. At that time, I also worked with the Woodlands on many, even though they weren't in the metro area, but we worked and tried to address a lot of their transportation issues. Citizens welcomed improved transit, of course, across the region unless it impacted their neighborhoods specifically, such as certain bus lines or certain services. And we really heard from those people. When those people went to HGAC and opposed those certain projects, and there were very few of them, those projects did not succeed. But by and large, Metro is many years along now and pretty successful in many regards. So, I wanted to let you know about that. One of my major concerns, I brought it out last night at a public meeting, is really where the growth is in the Woodlands. I know it's not Shenandoah so much, even though they want to point out the Sam Moon Center over here as justification somewhat for the underpass, is the U's Landing Project. That is a significantly high, a significant high-density development, which is fine, we like that, but it's going to be a tremendous traffic generator. And we don't have a lot of arterial roads to serve it except for Woodlands Parkway, I believe primarily, Research Forest secondarily, and some others. So, many of us, in looking at figures that seem to be changing constantly, there were new figures today. I'm sorry, I'll just.
No, no, take, finish.
I'll just shorten it up.
Yeah, take another minute or so, we interrupted.
Is that most of the justification for future projected transportation needs are on Woodlands, I mean, I'm sorry, Lake Woodlands, and not necessarily on Research Forest. You all know the Woodlands' major planner. He stands up and says, "Well, if you took a survey of people in an Alden Bridge in Grogan's Mill, they'd be 100% for it." They don't live here. So, in the interest of time, I'm here to request if you all would graciously consider withdrawing your support for this project. I think that's kind of where the Woodlands is going. I know we're all going to go to HGAC one way or another in the future to oppose it. So, that is my position tonight. And thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you showing up.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, as promised, we have another council inquiry. You can definitely say whatever you have until the end, but if there's something that you wanted to make sure everybody heard before the room clears out, now would be a good time. Anybody got anything they need to go on record with? Other than Mike's going to tell everybody to go vote, and you should.
Go vote.
Okay. We will move to item seven, which is discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas amending residency and other restrictions on certain sex offenders.
Counsel, if I may, since the last meeting when we addressed this, I've had a couple of council members who have emailed me with some proposed changes, most of which I believe to be positive changes in the ordinance from what I have proposed here tonight. There was a typo, which two or three of you saw where we failed to change both ages from 16 to 17. That's easy. There was a question Councilman Fletcher asked about the section 14, 201.1, about when it would begin. And my suggestion is that we change that ordinance to put 14, 201.1 to say beginning on the effective date of this ordinance, which would add some clarification. There's a question on 14, 201.4. If you prohibit a registered sex offender from being in a park, is it appropriate to say each day is a separate violation? And I have been working with Officer Ferrand on that. I did not get a chance to talk with him about a possibility of changing that language. I will do that to see if there's something that he, as a peace officer, feels is more appropriate. Then, Councilman Beavers sent an email asking me if there was legal precedent for prohibiting a registered sex offender from physically being in a park. I researched that. I could find no law one way or another on that. It's my feeling that if it's legal to prohibit you from residing within 1,000 feet of a park, that you would, it would be legal that you could be prohibited from being present in a park. But to answer Councilman Beavers' email question to me is there's no legal precedent one way or another. And then, the last comment came from Councilman Fletcher also about a method of appealing certain very unique situations. And subject to what city council wants to do, I don't have a problem if you would like either amending section 14, 201.8 or adding a section 14, 201.9 that could provide, in exceptional circumstances, a right of appeal. And with that, I'll kind of turn that over to Councilman Fletcher because he knows more about what his thought process was.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to table until we get all these changes made.
So, that was going to be what I was going to say, but that's okay. I'll second the motion.
But I would, but I would, but before, before you table it, I would appreciate some discussion on this last issue, so I'll know how to re-draft.
So, I have a motion by Council McLeod to table. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. It sounds like we're going to have discussion, so let's discuss.
So, once this ordinance came out, had several, have had interaction with several different residents. And an issue that was brought to the forefront was regarding exceptions. And so, obviously, this ordinance is designed to prohibit sexual predators or specific sex crimes. And it's those against minors or against kids. And so, what was brought up was a real-life scenario, and I'll keep it short. But basically, they had a cousin that had been convicted of aggravated sexual assault. And I said, "Well, yeah, that's probably not going to fall under exemptions." And she goes, "Well, let me explain." She said, "The situation was, he was a senior in high school, 18-years-old. She was a freshman in high school, 15-years-old. They had been dating. Mom and dad knew they were dating, gave him the blessing. Unfortunately, she ended up pregnant. Once she became pregnant, mom and dad changed their mind, called the police. He was arrested and charged with aggravated sexual assault. That was 20-years ago. He's been a registered sex offender ever since. They've been married for, I forget the amount of time, 15-plus years, we'll say. And they now have three children." And she says, "What about somebody like that? Obviously, they're not a sexual predator, but they're charged with an aggravated sexual crime." So, again, the premise came back to why, what are we really trying to do with this ordinance and who are we trying to eliminate out of that 1,000-foot child safety zone? And it comes back to the sexual predator. It comes back to the one that truly is having, committing crimes against, against kids. My personal opinion, I would not look at that individual as a sexual predator, even though his crime was against, under our ordinance, a 17-year-old. She was 15-years-old. There is not a Romeo and Juliet law in the state of Texas, meaning that there's a three-year difference and it's okay. That is not a law in the state of Texas, although there has been instances in which precedent has been set, but still, it's still prosecutable. So, when we look at our ordinance, the thought process then became, okay, if we have a situation like that, how do we deal with it? So, I really would like, you know, all councilmen to kind of weigh in on that and throw an opinion out and see if that's something that we would want to consider is having an exemption in a process in which somebody can go through to, to live within that 1,000-foot of a child safety zone or go to the park. Obviously, in my personal opinion, I don't think that's what, what the intent of this ordinance was, was designed to do, was, was to eliminate that person and their family from participating within the community, of course. But again, that's just my opinion.
So, you know me, I don't mind stirring the pot a little bit, just to get everybody to think. So, I'm not being, I'm not being belligerent when I, when I, when I ask this question. She was 15. What if she was 14? Is he still eligible for the exception? Hold on, Byron. Is he still eligible, you know? What if she was 13? What if she was 12? At what point, at what point do we draw the line and say 14's too young, 15's not? Okay, is it 14 on the day, or is it 14 in one month, or is it 14 in eight months? I need to know what day is the line. So, I think my point in that is, and this is something I deal with in business, literally on a daily basis, is we have to very clearly set the, set the expectation and then hold people accountable to it. And I think the easiest way to do that is follow the law. We don't need to play judge and jury. At least, I don't feel like I need to play judge and jury. I think that if, if our legal system in this country has convicted somebody as being a sex offender, I'm good with what the legal system says. Because at that point, once we open it up for interpretation, the downside of that is, is now we become subject to any sort of legal action if somebody says, "Well, you're discriminating against me because you're saying that my crime wasn't as bad as that person's crime, even though we were both charged the same." And so, I think, for my take, if we're going to adopt something of this nature, it's got to be black and white, it's got to be crystal clear, and, and, and we have to be able to enforce it fairly across the board without playing judge and jury. That would be my take.
I have a couple of questions about it, but not nearly as big as what Ted has just proposed. So, I'll let everybody else weigh in on that and then we can come back to my little minor, my little minor questions.
Personally, I don't want to be the arbiter of the degrees.
Right.
And the exceptions.
I will say, just real quickly, I thought we did, we actually have a Romeo and Juliet law. It says, "If a young adult over the age of 17 has consensual sexual relations with somebody under 17, but at least 15, with no more than four-year age difference between the two, the new law doesn't require the older party to register as a sex offender if convicted of statutory rape." Problem is, that's not retroactive. So, if that's 20-something years ago, that's, but that's not, like I said, it's not retroactive. And I kind of agree with everybody else. First of all, who would we want to mitigate the exceptions? That would be a question I would have. I don't want to get in that business. I agree, this particular case sounds frustrating for everybody. But until the courts clear him, that's, I would consider him still that, I don't think he's a threat, but that's not what the courts have said.
I agree. We have no rules of evidence. I mean, there's, there's no way that we could tell if we're getting accurate information or what. I think a bright, bright line was the way to go.
Well, here's another thing that I've kicked around or looked up, is everything is predicated on this sex offender's name being on the public safety sex offender database. So, whether or not any of the degrees apply, if the fellow's name is on there, it's on there.
His or hers.
Or hers, right. This person. Now, I looked at some things from Austin, they passed a similar thing, and some of the people said that they made a, an agreement with the public defender at the time, with the DA, that their record would be expunged or whatever, but nah, it's on the database. All of that. So, there's lots of things that I think we need to really look at.
So, that might be actually a consideration if the courts have cleared it, but I don't, I'm not sure why the court didn't clear it and not be on the database.
If your record is expunged, it's gone. It's wiped off.
Right.
And.
But your name is not taken off of this sex offender's database.
So, that would be a listing.
And they're all actually saying that Austin threw a House bill, whatever. And I haven't looked that up yet, but.
Yeah.
That's all.
Well, in that particular, I mean, I read that too, Charlie. In that particular case, what had happened was, was they passed a law that was retroactive. So, it went back. And so, what had happened is that you had several people that had made a deal with the DA. And so, they, they went through their probationary period, all was well, and they didn't have to register. And then, they passed a new law. And when the new law came into play, it went back retroactive to their crime. And then, they had to, now, they had to be registered. So, it's a little bit different scenario in that.
True, true, but it's, but it's a scenario, correct.
So, in, so, in that aspect, and under this ordinance, if they lived here and they weren't on the registry before, and then now their name came up and they had to be on the registry, they're, they're looking for renters, because they move in.
So, one of my questions.
They're going to have to, they would be, they'd be grandfathered.
No, because they're not grandfathers, because they weren't previously on the list.
Correct.
Is what Ted is saying, according to this ordinance.
According to our ordinance right now, they're not living here in the law, in the ordinance came out. So, those that are currently living here are exempt.
Because they're listed.
Because they're, they're living here and they're listed on the registry.
And that might be something that we need to look at, because I, I hadn't thought that through until you just said that.
So, in this scenario, what had happened, it would be like they're living in our city, our ordinance comes out, then the state passes a new law that says, "Okay, everybody that committed this type of crime, back to this year, you now have to register." At that point, you'd have to register.
Seems exposed.
I might, maybe in the period since it looks like we'll table this, I think that 14, 201.8 says that, that if they establish residency before the day the ordinance was adopted, they can apply for the exemption.
Right.
So, it seems to me that they would be, they would be grandfathered.
Correct.
The only, the only thing about it is it, it names the sex offender must apply for an exemption.
Still the same person, but.
I understand, but they weren't a sex offender.
But they weren't a sex offender at the time.
I think we should let.
We'd have to clean that up.
We'll do the legal after, during the next couple of weeks.
No, I agree with that. One of the questions I had, Bill, was, does the child safety zone have to be within the city limits of Shenandoah in order for the ordinance to affect where they can live in the city limits of Shenandoah?
Yes. Yes. We're not going to have power outside of our city limits.
No.
No, but if we had a school.
So, in other words, the park over on Grogan's Mill, does that affect the houses in Shenandoah that are within 1,000 feet of that park?
It's my opinion that if the park is one foot outside the city limits, you cannot use that and measure 1,000 feet from. You need to measure, it needs to be inside the city limits.
But if it was a half-foot?
If it's, if it's inside by one foot, then you could measure from there.
It's in the city limits.
It would be then partially in the city, city limits.
That park is in the city limits.
The park on Grogan's Mill?
That little baby one?
The Avalon Park.
Yep, it's in the city limits.
No, that's not in the city limits. That's, that's a Woodlands park.
Yeah.
No, I believe the mayor's right, because the city limits wraps around Park A.
Does it, does it wrap that little park?
That park is not within the city limits.
Does Park Gate have a private park in there?
Okay, so that was my second question. You stole my thunder. Does it, do private parks, how do you, does it have to be public child free safety zones, or can they be private? Because we do have a couple of neighborhoods that have, that have, I think Grogan's Reserve has a private park.
No, it can be private, and in fact, it's this, defined as a place where children commonly gather. So, a private park, you would count 1,000 feet. And then, it says, "Without limitation, a park, a playground, a school, daycare facility."
And a video arcade facility, so that also means main event.
Right.
Would be a child safety zone, so anything within 1,000 feet of main event would be covered as well.
So, I would like.
So, this also affects our hotels, by the way.
Well, that's, yeah, I was going to bring that up. Hotels are temporary.
Well, it only, it only if.
They're more than.
Four days.
Four days. As long as you stay at a hotel four days or less, you're not.
And that would be the same for an Airbnb?
Correct. Our private residence, I mean.
You've also got to enforce this. That's, that's another.
So, I would like, when the ordinance comes back, because one of the things I noticed about this one is, we didn't list all of the defined areas in the city. We talked about doing that last time, like, we had the pool, but we didn't include the parking lot of the pool. We just, based on the details. So, I would like to see, like, these are the safety zones.
I'd like to see a map.
A map.
Yeah. Yeah. Here's, here are the safety zones, and here's 1,000 feet from those maps. And so, these are the affected residents.
If you do that, every single time, if you include it in the ordinance, every single time you change, add a park or something, you're going to have to amend this ordinance, or.
We would know if we added a park, but we wouldn't necessarily know if there was a private daycare.
And you would not, it, it says, "A place where children gather," so you could be constantly.
Can I ask a question?
Well, they should. Let's put it that way, if they're truly a daycare.
Please.
When it says, "Where children commonly gather," does that include bus stops that they wait at every morning and they get off at every afternoon?
I would say yes.
Then you got to get the bus route from the school district.
That's not hard. We know what those are. So, that, I guess that's my concern, is to make sure that the police know where it's enforceable.
Well, and that's where.
Either that, or we're going to have to have a separate document that says, "These are our child safety zones."
Well, well, Ferran.
If we just added the bus route, that's a whole city.
It's a whole city. I mean, 1,000 feet from every bus stop is.
Yeah, because the bus moves and they congregate in the bus.
Well, it's bus stops, but.
It's a bus stop.
So, I mean, this is a good, these are good reasons why sticking to the, sticking to the ordinance that has been upheld by the state Supreme Court.
Absolutely.
Is a good move. And veering off of that, we get into gray territory, it seems. And veering off of that, we get into gray territory, it seems.
Can I make one more suggestion? Instead of per day, I think it should be per offense, because if you catch them in there one day and you write them a citation.
Well, that's what I was going to talk to Faran about, is the best wording.
Because you might, you might have them leave and then come right back. So it should be per offense.
So Bill, I do, I would like for you to still look into fourteen two oh one point one a little bit further. Maybe ask T M L for some guidance. The way I read it, they wouldn't even be allowed to drive past a school because they would suddenly be present in a child safety zone. So I just want to make sure that we have a defensible ordinance.
Well, I had a similar question. It's not for the ordinance, but chief, with the L P Rs, will it notify us that a sex offender's vehicle has come into the city limit? If, when we're up and full, but.
Yes, it does, it does notify you on sex offender license plate.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thanks.
Must have driven their mother's car.
Okay, so we've had some discussion. We had a motion to table. Do we have any more discussion? You got enough, you have enough direction to? Okay. All in favor of the table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to table carries five oh. Item eight, discussion and possible action regarding selling surplus vehicle.
Counsel and mayor, at the October eighth meeting, oops. We declared the two thousand eleven Chevy Caprice and the Malibu, the detective investigators' cars, as surplus. After that meeting, Raymond was approached by Lone Star Products and Equipment. They're the company who do all the retrofitting for our Tahos. They want to offer in exchange for the Caprice, twelve thousand dollars of credit for future work. This is the first time we've kind of encountered this, so we kind of wanted a little bit more guidance and approval.
I make a motion to approve that.
Just to get the discussion going on the second.
Yeah.
What are requirements on the city? Are we required to get more than one offer on that or we just take the highest? I mean.
It's very interesting. There is, while we have a host of regulations with regard to purchasing, the local government code does not put any requirements on selling.
A crowd question, do they?
Yeah. I noticed that whoever booked this thing out booked it out with zero miles and I don't care if it really has zero miles, it's still not worth twelve thousand dollars.
And counsel, just to add, we do have a, an estimate from Lone Star that shows that credit going against specific equipment. So we know what that credit's going towards, so we're not going to have a twelve thousand dollar floor mat or something like that. It's going to be a value back to the city that we can identify.
Like when they outfit the trucks.
Well, good, Kathy, that was one of my.
Because we didn't want just a credit hanging out there defined by someone else.
Sure, yeah. So the only business that we have with Lone Star is outfitting police vehicles.
And public works.
And public works, okay.
So we'll use up that credit with these new two trucks.
We'll use up that credit on the next patrol vehicle that we park.
The estimate we got from Lone Star, the total cost for the new Tahoe with all the interior additions would be seventeen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. So you take twelve off of that, so you're looking at five point, I mean, five thousand five hundred.
So the seventeen thousand five is within reason?
Yes. Yes, that's going off of H G A C's buy, or head buy point price on the equipment, so.
It's good work, chief, because it proves that N A D A books and Kelly Blue Book don't buy cars. People do, and they're worth what someone's willing to pay for, so it's a good, good deal.
So I am, it's, I know we went off the Blue Book or the N A D A. Have we looked at other auction sites or to see what similar vehicles are selling for?
Renee Bates sells Conro P D's patrol vehicles and they go for about sixty five hundred dollars. So, but they have more miles on them than ours do. A few more miles on.
And what, what will happen to the money that was designated to outfit those vehicles in the budget now?
So it will remain within that, that line item. And if we want to expend it on something else, it will come to council per the.
Policy.
Yeah, the ordinance.
So if we had, if we had sold this, that money would then have gone back into a.
It would have gone to the proceeds from capital.
The proceeds from capital sales.
So technically, we're not receiving cash, we're receiving, so you're basically funding still though, yeah.
So does that go, the proceeds from capital sales, does that end up in the equipment, vehicle replacement?
Not, I mean, yes, for this one we did.
So it seems like we should take this, the amount that we're going to credit, reduce the, the other line item in the budget and move that money to the vehicle replacement.
Equipment replacement, I tried designate it per an item, so we just have to designate what that fund would be going towards. Would it be going towards another P D replacement car or?
Same thing it would be going towards if we had sold it.
Yeah.
Well, it would be capital.
Equipment replacement, equipment replacement is based on items, so.
Right.
Instead of just a capital fund. So I would just need it to make, just make sure that it's still P D's claim on it and it can go towards a replacement vehicle in the future kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. But generally speaking, it would go to our surplus fund.
It would go to a vehicle replacement fund, not the normal.
Not the norm, not this, the sale surplus.
I don't think so.
So equipment replacement.
When we sell a surplus vehicle, typically what happens?
It goes into your, your general fund revenue and your water sewer revenue, depending on what fund the car is coming from.
That's what my understanding was.
The Caprice is actually technically an equipment replacement vehicle. It's been budgeted for there.
Gotcha.
So we purchased the, the new Dodge trucks from that fund, so we didn't take the proceeds.
I agree with you, Karen, it absolutely makes sense to put it back, okay.
So I believe I had a motion by Council McLeod to approve, and I had a second by Councilman Fletcher. We kind of did discussion in the middle of that, but do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item nine, discussion and possible action regarding the Texas Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Funding Application.
Yes, mayor and council, give you some background on this before you make an action on it. This is a grant application that staff has been working on since April of this year for the East Relief Pond Project. I know we're currently looking at the option one B, but this is for the, the full blown project, deepening the pond over there, putting in the larger pumping station. It's a twenty three million dollar project. And been working with a consultant, with FEMA, to get this application filled out and submitted. We're trying to get this submitted as soon as possible to get us a little higher in the queue as far as the awarding of these applications. So what's before you now is a consideration of a letter that we need to submit with the application. Typically, for these grant applications through FEMA for hazard mitigation, the FEMA requires a local match of twenty five percent for the project, which for this project would be five point seven million dollars. Staff had received a, a letter from the governor's office stating that because, for the Hurricane Harvey, and this is related to the Hurricane Harvey application, Congress assured that local governments would not need to pay that twenty five percent. It would actually be paid for by the state through the C D B G, the Community Development Block Grant. So staff had been, had been working on that premise that this letter wouldn't be needed. Last week, and this kind of, this explains why there's such short notice on this agenda item. Last week, the consultants called me and said that we do indeed still need a letter showing where that funding would come for if the city was required to do the twenty five percent match, despite the fact that we've been assured we won't need to. So that's what this letter is, is here before you two to discuss and make a motion on. You can see the letter in the attachments. My name's on it, just because that's what they had put on there. I think it'd be more reasonable to put the mayor's name on there since that's potentially obligating a large amount of money. So that's the background I have for now. Obviously, if there's any questions, discussion.
I'll make a motion, will you approve that T D E M be the funding source and ask the mayor to sign?
Second. Do we have a motion by Councilman Brought? We have a second by Councilman Ramaker. Do we have any discussion?
So you said the current option one B, what's the cost on one B?
About a million, approximately.
Which M D D's already, yeah, which M D D's already picked up the tab for, that's been.
That was the point I was coming to, was what the other two options were, just so that everybody would know publicly what that is. And that obviously this fund's the whole thing.
This, this is the granddaddy with the park and the path around and the whole nine yards. And Joseph was being polite at best and modest when he kept saying staff. The reality of it is, I got an email, didn't know really what it was. I forwarded to Joseph back when he was the interim city administrator. He figured it out and jumped on it and we wouldn't be where we are right now more for Joseph digging into this. And who knows, man? One of these days, we could have a, you know, thirty million dollar park sitting over there and all of our flood problems taken care of because you found this. So thank you. Joseph, brilliant. So I think it's great work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm very excited about the possibility of completing this. Bill, this is a kind of an odd situation that I'm looking at. We're, we've got a letter that says we're absolutely not going to be required to pay this money, but you need to sign a letter that says you're willing to pay this money. That's, where's the catch here?
Two things. Number one, at some point, we have to assume that if the state of Texas tells us no, we're going to fund it, that they're going to. The second thing I would say is that if for some odd reason that wasn't true and we could get the federal government to fund eighteen million of a twenty four million dollar project. I know M D D is discussing funding three million dollars of wetlands credits. So there's probably three million dollars that's potentially funding there. I just can't see why the, the city wouldn't find.
But even if we didn't have the money, for an unknown reason, we could walk away from.
Certainly, oh, certainly, yes. You can always, you can always say, I'm sorry, I don't have six million dollars, I don't want your eighteen.
This isn't a N C double A golf tournament.
Just real quick to add to that, I talked with the Texas Department of Emergency Management and asked them that question and they said that should, should the state not cover it? You're funded the amount or you're awarded the amount before you accept that. You know, if you can't come up with the money or whatever, all they have to do is the mayor sends a letter saying we're withdrawing our application and there's no obligation.
Okay, so we're not, this just says we agree right now, but if whatever happens in the future, we're not absolutely obligated.
Correct.
This isn't a contract, it's just an application.
Yeah, that's what I was real concerned about, to make sure we were.
So I do think we should bring this to M D D so they, I mean, if this came to the point where we were actually looking for funding, this would be an obvious M D D project.
I don't disagree with that.
Other than that, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I would think if we were looking to go out for a bond issue for one point three million dollars for a water well, that we probably can figure something out.
We were never looking to go for.
We were, the city was at one point. I would think that a twenty three million dollar park or, not a park, but something that would cure all of our flooding issues would probably make sense if that was the last.
I think we should be careful with phrases like cure all of our flooding issues.
Someone will make more for us.
Help facilitate our flooding issues.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Once again, good work, Joseph. And whoever else helped you, I'm sure you didn't do it alone. I would have to think probably Kathy and Lisa have jumped in there a little bit and maybe a bunch of others.
Joseph, when are you going to submit that application?
Tomorrow, so if I could get that to you tonight, Rich, to sign.
No problem.
I'll probably, I'm going to send that to them tonight, actually, and they'll do their Q A Q C tomorrow and we'll have it submitted by Friday, so go on.
Sounds good. Item ten, discussion and possible action regarding civic club officers. Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, will you? The recommendation from the civic club appointing their officers.
I have a motion by Councilman Brought to approve. I have a second by Councilman Ramaker. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to see the, the direction the civic club's going.
I do too.
Becoming more and more independent, standing on their own and just help them out, keep them.
I'm just going to state this for the record, I'm sure the answer is yes, but all of these people have been contacted and they all four agree to serve in these positions.
Yes. We haven't talked with their spouses.
For the record, yeah. Don't, don't worry, we have.
And they asked to change by that notice.
Yeah.
There was one neighborhood.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five oh before Ted gets himself in trouble. Item eleven, discussion and possible action regarding a traffic study proposal for Twisted Oak at City Entrance driveway. I'll make the motion to fund the traffic study at Twisted Oak. I have a motion by Councilman Ramaker. I have a second by Councilman Brought. Do we have any discussion?
So I can't get twenty three million dollars, but I can save us two thousand. The traffic study is going to say it's not warranted. The, the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, I mean, it's fairly explicit. We actually did a similar traffic study just.
A few feet away.
Hundred feet further south.
Yeah.
And we removed a three-way stop sign. So I'm opposed to it.
Maybe that's why the resident that came to me complaining about the speeds of the cars going through there.
So that's a good.
That's an enforcement issue.
And it's a child safety issue as well on that street, because there isn't anything, once you get onto Twisted Oak from Shenandoah to slow you down.
Until you get to the mailbox behind my house.
Until one I break to not run into your house.
Yeah, somebody actually ran over that mailbox. The, there are, speed control is a bad reason to use a stop sign.
Safety is.
I know what the, I know what the traffic study is going to say.
I could introduce you to the ladies that were interested.
I'd be happy to talk to residents at any point.
Well, my only question was going to be, since Blile provided the proposal of two thousand dollars, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot or ask you to look into your crystal ball, but what is your realistic judgment? You know, before we start going down there and getting realistic judgments, it's like, shouldn't we actually know what the actuals are in terms of the counts and the speeds, which none of you can tell me right now.
If we wanted to study the speeds along Twisted Oak, I could support that. But if we wanted to study it to see if a stop sign was warranted, that would be a waste of money.
We could put the radar thing right at the end and just watch them.
I don't know that that's a fair indicator. Everybody sees the radar and slows down.
The traffic counters we have, we can set them to, to in line so that we can actually record speeds. So we could collect that data if that's something the city's interested as part of the study. I'm guessing your question is, am I looking in the crystal ball, do we know what the, the result of the study will be? Is that what you're asking?
You probably have.
Byron's absolutely right, that most likely the, the result's going to be that it's not warranted per typical engineering standards.
Does that mean we can't put it up?
No.
I don't think so. Because within our city limits, if we wanted to, we could. It's just, it would be, we'd be putting up an unwarranted stop sign, what basically we would have to. we would have to.
Not that it would be a huge hurdle, but I think technically, we have a ordinance that adopts the TMU TCD.
Yeah, I read that with the sign.
If we want to just say, let's go put up a stop sign, I mean, it saves the 2,000 bucks.
Oh, I'm just asking, I'm just asking questions.
Not on tonight's agenda, we can't, but I know what the study's going to say. But I would be happy to get traffic counts. More data is helpful.
So if we put a stop sign up there, do you think people are actually going to stop like they do for all the rest of the stop signs in the valley?
I can't stipulate what everybody else does at every stop sign, I'd say.
All right, let's call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Three nays, two ayes. For the record, I would like to ask Chief, could we, do we still, well, first, is our radar sign operational? Because last I heard, it wasn't. And if it is, could we put it over on Twisted Oak and radar some speeds coming through there?
I'll find out the first thing in the morning, and we'll, if I, if it doesn't work, we might be able to get a traffic counter put out.
Yeah, if not, I'm sure that there's room in the budget to get a traffic counter out there.
Byron said he'd stand out there with a gun and...
And a clicker?
Yeah, and a clicker. And you could do it from your front yard.
My backyard.
The side yard there.
Okay, item 12, discussion regarding department monthly reports.
Counsel, this is from staff. We've been taking a look at our monthly reports, which over the last year, we've streamlined a little bit already, but we feel like there is still some that can be done. There's some redundancy. For example, we have the full AP report on the agenda, and then we break the AP up across the monthly reports. You're seeing the same information two different ways, and we feel like that's redundant, because the full report is broken up by department as well. We also wanted to get counsel's input, because these reports have kind of evolved over the years based on preferences that came up, and we wanted to see what this counsel, if this counsel had any, some things they'd like to see done differently, some things they'd like to see added, some things that aren't really, don't really serve any purpose. We're not, this is a discussion only, we're not looking for answers tonight, but just food for thought. Jackie has some ideas about her report that have been added over the years that don't really seem to be of much benefit, so...
I support the change that you proposed. I would also greatly support you presenting monthly reports how you and the department heads think are the best, and that if any of us thinks there's something missing, I'm certain that we will give you a nudge, but...
What we didn't want to do is, for example, the mayor and I were discussing this, and he said, "Well, there's, you know, I use this particular pieces of information." So that's kind of what provoked this, is we may not know exactly what you all benefit from or what you could benefit from more. So we can certainly make those changes on our own. We just don't want to take away something that you might be using.
So whether, I guess I'm going to, Lisa, do you have any changes your reports are looking at?
We're going to add utility bill and back onto ours. And there's just some minor ones, like the budget report. That one's just, it's a constant change. It's not the most reliable, so every month, it could be different, because things could change, refunds, everything. For the most part, I try to keep it as streamlined as possible, because I do have the transparency page, too, so a lot of my other stuff's on the transparency page. I try to not duplicate efforts there. But, and the mixed beverage receipts, I'm still working with the comptroller, trying to get that all worked out. For some reason, I can't get the file to open now, so... But if anyone else has anything that they think would be more beneficial, let me know. You can email me anytime, I can look into it.
I just want to make sure we weren't cutting anything out there, because...
No, I'm just going to find a better way to do the budget report. That's the one that just shows you the year-to-date, like, budget fund, the spending, first budget.
Okay.
I'm trying to find a better way to show it. A lot, and I would say, like, for a lot of us, these reports were inherited, like...
Right, right.
We weren't the forerunners on a lot of these, so if you think there's something that needs to be changed, don't hesitate.
And I would encourage all department heads, if you think there's a clear way to present information, and I was actually going to mention and talk about MDD tax receipts versus the city, they should track, I mean, the graph should look the same, even if the dollars don't, and I understand there's some delays based on...
Technically, MDD can collect tax on the ETJ.
And MDD is a pecking order, so it comes, I think it goes county, municipality, and then it goes to, I think, emergency districts, and then MDD, and then special districts are like the last one on the totem pole, really. So if we're in ESD, that it likes to take more than, or, you know, so...
But, yeah.
There's a whole pecking order, it's very confusing.
I really think that staff should make the reports your own.
Right.
Yeah.
And we'll give you feedback if there's something missing.
Sounds great. We'll do it that way, then.
Might be.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into item 13, which is discussion and possible action to request the release of Grogan's Mill Road from the City of Houston's ETJ.
Mayor, would you like to?
Sure. So this is, this is, and is there any way we can get the letters, maybe, at least up on the screen, so that people can see what the letters that we sent over?
It'll take me just a moment to push them over.
I mean, I've got one pulled up. I can read them, and then if we need to, we can put them up.
I'd like to see them.
So, okay, so, yeah, Byron said yes.
Okay.
And so what started this was however long ago, back when the discussion about the supposed overpass, underpass, that whole issue, which we've been talking about, one, as I told you all, one of the proposals on the table was an overpass on Grogan's Mill Road, and the comment was made that the county would need to widen Grogan's Mill to four lanes. So working through a number of different options, came to the conclusion of, why don't we ask if we can annex Grogan's Mill Road, just strip annex it from the City of Houston? So currently, it's in the City of Houston's ETJ, and so that, therefore, because it's in the City of Houston's ETJ, the county has control of it. So long story short, I called Houston and just started the conversation. Kathy and I, the city administrator and I, ended up going down to the City of Houston, met with their planning and zoning board, basically, if you will, and they were very receptive and gave us sort of a checklist of things we needed to do in order to accomplish this. One of those was, or two of those things, one was we needed to send them a formal letter of request, and then one of the other things we needed to do was get a formal letter of support from the county releasing, or that they were okay with the City of Houston releasing Grogan's Mill Road from their ETJ and allowing us to put it in ours and then annex it. Met with a couple of the commissioners, and in fact, I met with Commissioner Riley again this morning and gave him a copy of the letter, and he said that he would support it. So he is going to take this letter to the next commissioner's court. Obviously, they'll have to vote on it. Once they vote on it, then he can send the letter back to us. We can send that to the City of Houston, along with our letter of request. We have to send in a couple of other items, meets and bounds, but nothing that we couldn't, nothing that we couldn't get, and nothing that seemed like it was an obstacle. And hopefully, if it goes the way we want it to, we should be able to strip annex Grogan's Mill Road from our portion, our southern portion of the city limits, right there at Tiffany Green...
Dulcimer?
Well, that's Tiffany Green Boulevard, I think, that comes across. I think it's the name of that road. And all the way up to Vision Park on the western side of Grogan's Mill. So no houses, we won't be annexing any houses, we won't obviously be annexing any commercial properties, we don't pick up any tax base off of this. But what it would allow us to do is, number one, it would allow us to enforce traffic with RPD. It would allow us to maintain Grogan's Mill to our standards that the city has for the rest of our city in terms of, you know, upkeep. It would allow us to re-stripe it and put signage out if we wanted to. So if we wanted to re-stripe the crosswalk at Wellman and Grogan's Mill, maybe even a lighted crosswalk, we would have the ability to do that. If we want to take it a step further, if we wanted to put a stop sign up on Grogan's Mill, we could do that. And most importantly, it would ensure that Grogan's Mill never gets expanded to four lanes. You know, we don't know what a future council might do, but at least from that point forward, it would be in the hands of the city, and we would be able to determine that fate down the road.
We do know what a past council did.
So I didn't want to go annexing roads without running it by everybody, if you're first, obviously. It's not necessarily something that we have to vote on or take action on unless you all just decide that, hey, this is a terrible idea.
I think it's a fantastic idea.
It's a great idea.
I would love to make a motion in support of a letter requesting the...
I'll second that.
Yeah, so, fingers crossed, we'll, you know, we'll finish, I wanted you to at least see the two, the two letters that we were sending. So this is the letter to the City of Houston requesting the annexation of Grogan's Mill Road.
You're talking the complete right-of-way?
Yes.
The whole road?
Yeah, the road, and more importantly, as Charlie states, the right-of-way. That's, and that's, that's the key.
And ask for two feet to the west side, too.
Yeah.
They'll grab some...
All right, you can ask, they can say no.
Yeah, and so we, and so we do have to be careful not to, they gave us a scenario of if anybody's property extended over into where Grogan's Mill Road is now, and then that was an easement that they put Grogan's Mill Road through, that would become an issue because we have to go to each individual property owner. I think Grogan's Mill's been there a lot longer than...
We can go to the courthouse and get that.
Yeah, and Grogan's Mill's been there a lot longer than those neighborhoods there, so I don't think we're, I don't think we run any risk of that, have to worry about that.
I'm pretty sure Grogan's Mill was platted at the time and should be fine.
Any questions or...
What's the, what's the timeframe that we're looking at?
Their commissioner's court next meeting is, gosh, you told me this morning, and it's...
It was yesterday, so it's probably two weeks.
November, maybe...
Second Tuesday.
Yeah, November 13th, maybe, or something? What November is that, what day is that?
Yeah, I think November 13th.
Okay, yeah. So November 13th will be the commissioner's court meeting. Hopefully, we get an approval on it, get it back, then we'll send it to the City of Houston. They didn't necessarily give us the timeline, but boy, they sure seemed very...
They were very receptive.
Receptive. I don't think it would take that long.
One of the other things we'll have to do, of course, is, is, once we do that, that becomes our road to maintain and take care of and repair.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that expense is well worth it, but just putting that out there for everybody when it comes time to rebuild it. So we're going, this road, we're going to have to pay for striping and maintenance and all that good stuff.
I agree. One of the reasons why we're talking.
We don't get any tax benefits from it, but obviously, we gain...
It's a huge benefit for our families and residents who are in that area.
Quality of life assurance, it's, it's worth a lot.
Safety.
That's a stop sign warrant study I could support, Ron.
We've already asked for that, I've already asked for that three years in a row.
If we could lower that hump.
Don't think you've heard the last of Twisted Oak.
Okay, well, anyway, I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Mayor, I think this is a perfect example of the diplomacy that you bring to this board and the protection that you are providing our residents.
Absolutely.
You are working overtime for us, and we appreciate it.
Very much so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate that. And I will say, on that note, man, I've thrown a lot of crazy stuff at staff lately, and I appreciate throwing things together at the last minute, kind of like this, "Hey Kathy, can you meet me down in Houston on Friday afternoon?" You know, and they have a big public works building, by the way.
Bigger than ours?
A little bit.
60 stories tall or something, whatever it was. They have two different sets of elevators. But no, I appreciate all of the help that staff has, has given me, Courtney, Kathy, Ms. Debbie, everybody, literally everybody up here, because there've been some crazy requests lately, a lot of last-minute stuff, and not once have they batted an eye or told me how crazy I am. I appreciate that.
Not to your face.
Not to my face, yeah, and that's all that matters. Okay, we'll keep you posted on how that comes along.
You have a motion to approve in a second.
We don't necessarily need to...
Let's do it.
Okay, we had a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. We had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
There you go.
Okay, we will move to item 14, which is discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2018 budget workshop meeting.
Would they be approved as read?
Have a motion by Councilman Brought to approve.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Beavers. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 15, ratify the accounts payable for the month of September 2018. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman McLeod.
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Beavers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That moves us to item 16, which is city administrators' updates.
Counsel, I have just a few here. First of all, week before last, we had four staff and four council members all attend the annual TML conference. It was a great conference. I feel like we attended some good sessions, a lot of beneficial information, so it was a benefit to the city. This past Saturday, we had Trash Bash. We had 145 residents attend. We filled four of the five 30-yard dumpsters, and we only had to turn away two non-residents. So that's, that's progress. We had police, members of the police department attend the Trash Bash, and they went over to the Fall Festival at the Christ Community School just to have a presence there. There was a great turnout at both of the events in spite of the weather. Another PD update, the robbery that we had recently at the Denny's. The second suspect has been identified through fingerprints found on the getaway vehicle, so SPD's rounding up those people one by one. We've had some multiple felony warrants that have been filed for theft, suspects from Home Depot, so they're stepping up their operations over there, too, trying to prevent theft. Couple other little quick reminders, we've got a Coffee with Cops coming up Wednesday, November the 7th, 4:00 PM to 5:30. This is going to be over at the Shenandoah Starbucks up here on the Service Road, so they're happy to host us, but they just have asked for that late afternoon time slot. And last but not least, a quick reminder that we have only one council meeting in November. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Kathy. We will move into item 17, which is our second citizens' forum, and we have Ms. Julia Hepburn signed up to speak. If you would please, just state your name for the record. Residents are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to agenda or non-agenda items.
Hi, Julia Hepburn, 28903 Enchanted Drive. But I think you guys answered my questions, because the stop sign on Twisted Oak, I mean, I live on a major thoroughfare where there's four stop signs, and you know, it's Grand Central Station. I mean, it's a joke, but Wellman Road needs one desperately. Hopefully, they would pay attention to that, because when you exit Wellman to go onto Grogan's Mill, you know, there's a turn both ways. You can't see, and you think you answer, and then all of a sudden, someone's, "Hoo, there goes your front end." So, but I guess we can't do anything because it's not our road yet?
Correct.
So just FYI, that should be your first stop sign.
I've been saying it for three years.
Thank you, Ms. Hepburn. Okay, we will move to council inquiry, item 18, and we'll start with Councilman McLeod.
So, city business question. I'd asked a while back to, for us to bring the Woodlands fire contract. If we could start pursuing that, that's going to be expiring reasonably soon, and if we're going to be renewing that and how that's going to work on. Also, considering we have several different agreements with the Woodlands, if we could see about bringing those into a single agreement if necessary, or at least be able to consider them, hold... them holistically. But definitely, the Woodlands fire contract and how that relates to our police contract, I know that's gonna be expiring. We've got a year, two years left. We kind of need to get rolling on renewing that.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, because the last time, you mentioned at the last meeting, I wasn't entirely sure what you were asking, so.
Yeah, okay. And then, one other thing, so as the election approaches, we've all been on social media, so I'm gonna ask that we maintain all of our civility in political discussions, and so I'll say to my Republican friends, R doesn't mean righteous, and D doesn't stand for demonic. To my Democratic friends, I want to say that D doesn't stand for divine, and R doesn't mean repugnant. I want to quote John Wesley, paraphrase him briefly. "I met with those who had votes in the election and advised them to vote for the person they judged most worthy, to speak no evil of the person they voted against, and to take care their spirits were not sharpened against those that voted on the other side." That's John Wesley, October 6th, 1774. I think those are some wise words.
Very good, thank you, sir. Councilman Brought?
Glad you brought up the reports. I will look at that and we'll discuss it again. I'd also like to, if I could, look at any appointments on commissions that are coming up, if they do, and we take action on them before it's too late.
That's seconded, eh?
Will do.
That's all I have.
Councilman Beavers?
I'd like to ask Councilman McLeod what L stands for.
Or I.
Yeah, or I. Joseph, thanks for including the pool users compared to previous years, and it appears a significant higher user base this year.
Yeah, I spoke with Woody about that, and she said she thinks she's got a better way of tracking it, so it may just be more accurate-
Okay.
...information, rather than a spike.
It'll look good, nonetheless. I want to point out that Dave Embusters received a building permit September 25th, so that's good news, they finally have their wet lens and move forward. And then, if I understand the CVB report correctly, it appears that the two hotels currently owned by Ms. Jacobson are having trouble reporting some of the data requested by the city.
That's a constant.
I believe we heard several promises from her and her operating partner that they were gonna be better partners, so could you please remind them of those promises?
Absolutely.
It's disappointing to see so quickly after the permit was approved. I want to add on to Kathy, your comments on Trash Bash, I thought it was an excellent turnout, I loved seeing the police officers. Lisa, you were out there working your tail off. Appreciate you and all the public works staff and the officers that were out there. I think that's a great event, and if we filled four out of five and it rained the whole time, we gotta be careful with just five next time.
Right, well, we always have our dumpsters a backup, so we had six out there.
Okay. And I look forward to seeing all our little residents out at Halloween Safe Street.
Councilman Fletcher?
Just a couple of things. Have we officially approached Charlie Riley in regards to requesting at the crosswalk, I think we have five crosswalks on Grogan's Mill? Have we talked to him about putting flashing crosswalk signs there?
Well, officially, no, verbally, yes, and only at Wellman Road. But we talked about, in fact, we actually talked about the ones that are over where Corner Bakery used to be, I don't even know what that is now, but Commissioner Noack's been sort of on a, on a terror, putting those things up everywhere. Good for him, I think it's great. But we referenced those exact designed crosswalk, and that was where I went back to the statement about Wellman Road. If we strip-annex Wellman Road, then we have the ability to do that ourselves.
Well, that's why I asked what the timeframe was?
Yeah.
Because I know that, not just at Wellman, but all up and down Grogan's. I mean, obviously, if we put a stop sign out at Wellman, that's gonna help slow traffic.
So, I didn't even bring it to anybody's attention, because it just wasn't even worth talking about, but if you, if you look at Grogan's Mill Road and you look at the signage and the crosswalk, if you paid attention to it over the last six months, it's actually a little different than it used to be. They put in some, a couple of new signs on Grogan's Mill indicating where Wellman Road is, and they put in some new signs showing pedestrians, some yellow signs showing that, you know, it turns, and there's a, so all of that resulted from me going out to the commissioner's office, I don't even know what it was, four months ago, five months ago, something, we sat down, we looked at the intersection, pulled it up on Google Earth, and he talked about, hey, you know, let's do some improvement, see if we can increase some signage and make that crosswalk a little more visible. I was hoping for a little bit more than what I got, and quite honestly, after I saw what he did, I didn't even bring it up at one of the meetings, I thought, this isn't even worth talking about, and this is, this is not what we're looking for. But, you know, it, we all have a greater expectation, I think, than what anybody else outside of the city of Shenandoah is gonna have, so.
We do, I, no doubt about that, but that's because we have a higher standard than we said, too, so. So, I was just curious as to that, if that's something that, I realize with the ETJ that that will change, or annexing that road will change things, but that's also why I asked the timeframe, because if it's six months down the road, that's something that can be done fairly quick, whereas waiting for us to annex six months and then get a stop sign out there one or two months later, then now we're eight months down the road, and we can have something by the end of the year.
Sure.
And I have seen the signage, and unfortunately, if you're not looking for it, you're not gonna see it. It needs a little bit dazzling, need some flashing lights when people are in the crosswalks, especially at that turn there at Grogan's Mill and Wellman. I think we have some MDD appointments coming up before in October, in October every other year, or every year, two one-year, three one-year. So, Mayor, since you're the one that appoints, if you can make some recommendations for us.
We'll take a look at which seats those are on there and give them to you.
I think you will. And then, I just want, I participated at Trash Bash, not working, but-
Bring in trash.
I did twice. I actually came twice, too, once with a big load and then once with stuff that needed to be shredded, but I just want to thank staff, I mean, you guys do such a phenomenal job at those things. It's a great community event for our residents and benefits that you all give our residents. You really make all of us look good, but it's truly you guys that provide the support and the backbone behind the city and do what you do, and it's great to have a staff that truly does look at our residents from a residence-first perspective and truly what's best for the city. I can't tell you how often I come by the city late in the evening, and there's still staff cars out, and just the attitude of going above and beyond in all things that you do is just so greatly appreciated, not just by myself or other councilmen and the mayor, but also known by many, many of the residents here in the city as well. So, thank you all for, not just the Trash Bash, but just what you do every day is great. Mayor, I just want to give you kudos again, I know that, especially in the roadways and all the media attention and, not just media attention, but, but social media attention, that is very reckless at times. If people really knew what you did behind the scenes to make the progress that you've made for our city, I for one am greatly appreciative of your leadership and taking the initiative to make sure that we are represented and that we do have a seat at the table even when there's, there's not a seat. Because of your diplomacy and your tact and building relationships with others, you're able to get us a seat at the table and heard, and that's extremely important, rather than just sitting here and saying, well, we don't have a traffic problem. Obviously, we have a traffic problem, and the work that's being done, again, by staff and Blile and you, and I know there's others that I'm leaving out regarding I-45 and bringing that to fruition, there's a lot of hats to juggle there, and people really need to understand that, because of the Texas Open Meeting Act, it's not like we can bring three commissioners in the same room and talk to them. You gotta meet with everybody separately and then, you know, talk your deal, work it out, and then they have to take it into commissioner's court and talk it in open record, and then if there's anything changed in that, you have to go back and meet with all three separately again, and it's a big ordeal to coordinate all those things, and when you throw in CISD, and you throw in the city of Conroe, and TexDOT, it just gets very convoluted. And I really appreciate everybody standing on top of that, because that will truly make a big difference in our city when it comes, comes to play, and the Grogan's Mill annexation is just the icing on the cake. Thanks again.
Thanks, sir. So, Councilman Ray Baker?
So, Ted, I had a, I had a question. Was that, was that a former mayor that said that we didn't have a traffic problem in Shenandoah? Was he the same guy that James Noack said had his head in the sand?
I don't want to point any fingers at anybody, but yes.
All right. See, I had nothing to start out with, and y'all have given me stuff to talk about. The Jacobson Hotel, can I get the phone number of the managing partner that stepped up here and said he was gonna face up for us?
We can get that for you.
I think I'd like to talk to him.
I'm sure he'd like to receive your call.
And then, once I, once I got the idea of flashy caution lights, for like, say, say at our emergency exit onto Twisted Oak, what would it take to do that? Would I need a traffic study for that?
Just request the public works, okay?
Joseph?
That's what I was thinking. Ron just volunteered.
You may need a traffic study.
Only for safety.
I'd have to look at the Texas Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices-
Please do.
-regarding flashing lights, if, if they say anything about it.
Just to advertise that there's an emergency exit there. I've seen that by fire stations plenty of times.
Yeah, I think the ambulance is a police vehicle, so I have some attached to their vehicles, but I'll look into it.
Because there's only gonna be, there's only gonna be some emergency ambulances going out that exit occasionally, so. But that's a safety thing, so I guess I shouldn't mention it.
Well, remember, the ambulance towns run hot all the time, so their sign will be glaring down that driveway.
Well, just to condition, just to condition people that there is an entrance there, okay. And I also wanted to thank Rich for, you know, standing up for us, and, you know, really creative idea of getting that brought within our ETJ that solves a number of problems for us that even flashy signs can't. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Ron. Councilman Brought, did you have one more?
I've got one more. As I came to this meeting tonight, I lived on Cedarwood, stopped at Wellman, and as I pulled up, a black pickup truck went through that stop sign at 40 miles an hour. Would it be appropriate to ask public works to either figure out the cost of a bigger stop sign, or maybe one with LED lights around it or something at that intersection? I see this all the time.
I would support that, and we saw some of it.
What intersection, Wellman and what? Wellman and Grogan's?
Cedarwood.
Wellman and Cedarwood.
They run that stop sign all the time.
After, after I heard that, we went ahead and sent out an email to go ahead and get somebody over there to make sure everybody gets reminded of it.
Good. And I know, that's not, I know you can't patrol that all the time, and it's just very, it's the, when, when they're late, they're going home, they go right through that. Thank you, that's all I've got. And thank you for all you do.
Well, I'll wrap it up, and I'll throw those thank yous off on staff, because I have, like I said before, I've been running staff rampant with, you know, typically, I'm behind the windshield, and it's hard to do a bunch of stuff on your phone when you're supposed to be driving, so I called, and I literally almost called Courtney and just gave her my email password and said, will you start checking my emails and call me? But then I thought, nah, she's got her own stuff to do. But thank you all very much for, every request so far has been, just, you know, never second-guess, never, never even a hesitation, and some of them have been pretty crazy, so. But hey, if we, if we end up getting to annex Grogan's Mill, it'll pay off. So, I think, I think the mayor's office thought I was crazy when I called the first time, and the second, and the third, and the fourth, and the fifth, but sooner or later, I got through, and, and, you know, I think that would be, that'd be kind of a cool deal for the city, so. I told you all, my number-one goal out of this whole deal from day one has been to protect Grogan's Mill, and I think that we would accomplish that task. And then after that, you know what? We don't have to fight a whole lot of battles after that, because we will have protected our city the way we intended to, to begin with, so. Okay, well, I appreciate everybody's comments. Appreciate everybody coming tonight, yes.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry, I overlooked something on my updates, if you don't mind me rewinding for just a minute. Just to notify council that we, the mayor and I have been talking about the hours of operation for the CVB, and we've decided that it's best to close it on the weekends, it's dead over there. The mayor asked me to check the stats on visitors, and it's, it's very low, and so we're gonna do that effective immediately, and there's no council action required, it's just to make sure that you're all aware. And that's, that's it.
Thank you for remembering that, Kathy.
Sure.
Yeah, I forgot about that. Okay, well, with that, then, we will move into executive session. We're gonna consult with the attorney on the Damian Carter slew and personnel matters concerning a CVB director applicant. We will move into executive session at 8:31, recess the regular meeting. Thanks for coming, everybody.